Attended a Rotary Christmas Dinner, had a meeting with Supervisor Hemmingson, Sheriff Wilson and Doyle Shamely discussing the lack of production of timber on lands. The figures, and Supervisor Hemmings can back me up on any other statistics I missed, but on a healthy forest, I think the number of trees per acre is typically 100 to anywhere from 50 to 100 per acre. We have 418 per acre. So, there is a bad need to go in there and actually thin out the forest out there just for forest fires alone. Either you thin it and do some production with it, or you, it burns. So, there really isn't an in-between. That stuff keeps growing every day. So, they need to stay on top of it. Unfortunately, we're gonna end up with a new ranger, so I'm hoping this ranger will be a lot more, will work a lot more cooperatively with the community than the prior one had. So, we're looking forward to having introductions and getting a chance to develop a dialogue between the county and the community and the new ranger when they come in. Let's see. Celebrated Christmas and New Years with family. One cool experience I had, and I've never, having grown up in Delmarque County and been here this whole time, I had never been on a crab boat before. And, this is an impressive project, or just impressive process that goes on. It's a huge industry in Delmarque County. People are not aware, unless you're down there and you get a chance to see how many crabs they do pull in. This year was a little bit lighter on the numbers, but the crabs were pretty thick. It's, I want to thank Victor Pemilia invited me out with his crew, JJ and Tommy and Javier, and I was up at 3:00 in the morning on the boat by 4:00, and they're driving out there in the middle of, I mean, there's headlights on the front of the boat, that you can't see anything. That radar and, but a very cool process to watch them pull the crab pots up, empty them, and get that stuff stacked, and it was pretty impressive. We were out there, got to see a pod of pilot whales go by, which was pretty neat also, but, and the weather cooperated, so my sea legs held up, and I didn't end up throwing or putting chum out in the water in the process. So, it was a good, it was a great experience, and, one, I wish I'd been able to do sooner, but I'm, I want to thank Vic for having me out there and getting a chance to see the process. And, other than that, that's it.
Thank you Supervisor McClure.
Yes, thank you. I too had lots of holiday activity. All of my children were home, and it was one giant feast that we had for days and days, so that was a lot of my focus. I also had the opportunity to, we had a small event with Jared Huffman, and we were able to, I was able to talk with him about the illegal marijuana gardens on public land, and the dams on the Klamath, and the fish, and the training center for the culinary arts as a farm-to-dinner concept, and Medicare and unemployment insurance for the folks in our community who are struggling. I traveled to San Diego for a coastal commission, and we did some good work there. I think that we're seeing a movement to the center, and I think it's getting healthier. We had a Mission Bay High School, for example, which is within the coastal zone. There was at least an hour and a half discussion on should they have lights at their football field, and I can say that their lights prevailed. You know, so it's becoming more and more sensible. I will meet with, Jim Wood will be in town this weekend, and he's running for the Assembly. He's out of Hillsburg. He's probably, more than likely, going to be our next Assemblyman. I can give Supervisors times of where he's gonna be at Northwoods. I think it's 10 to noon. If people want to come by, it's just going to be a meet and greet. And then, Mark, Mike McGuire is now probably the head runner in the California R Senate seat for District 2. Chris Lehman decided to withdraw his name, and he put his support for Mike McGuire. Mike McGuire is also from Hillsburg, so it's important that we get him to understand the significance of where we are, and he is more than willing to do that. And he's gonna be up here on the 22nd. If people want to make contact with him, I have his contact information. Also, I went up and looked at the new bridge at Big Flat and the Spring, trying to figure a way out, how people can continue to get their traditional water supply without having to be in danger of being hit by a car, or some way that they can get their five gallons back into their car. So, that's kind of, I know that, I know the road department's been out there, and Jerry's been out there, so I think people are working on it, but it's something that we need to take a look at. I would also make a request that our LACCO members, that I know you're having a meeting sometime this month, that you take up the discussion of the Big Rock Community Services District Letter that was sent out on Public Dollar to its recipients, asking people to take a position one way or another about the state of Jefferson. And if people chose to be against it, they had to sign a formal complaint, and had to sign their name to that letter, which is historically not the method of voting in America. And, so, the people that contacted me were in fear of reprisal if they responded, so they chose not to respond. And by choosing not to respond, their non-response was then counted as an affirmative support. And it's all laid out in this letter, and I would really like LACCO to look at it, and hopefully LACCO may want to take it to the FPPC because it was a water district that's asking for a political activity that's outside of their, it's outside of their purview. And it was really upsetting to the constituent that brought this to me, and so I'm, I don't, who's on LACCO? So, I'm gonna pass the letter to you. Have you gotten the letter?
Yeah.
Okay, because it was, it was kind of frightful, thinking that this is how we want to start voting in our community. By, we, in a school district, it's known as the Levi Express, because it's, you can send something home with the kid, and they put it in their back pocket. And if it doesn't come back to you, then permission is granted on certain activities. And many times, it doesn't come back because it never gets out of that back pocket. And that's why it's called the Levi Express. So, this was a very strange way of wanting people to weigh in on what is historically in this country anonymous votes. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could add two things, I'm sorry, I forgot. It's been a long gap between meetings, but I did meet with Mike McGuire, and at the time Scott Lehman out of Arcata was running, Chris Lehman, sorry, I stand corrected. Mike is, I had a really good conversation with him. He's very pro vocational ed in the schools, economic development, those are two key things for me. I thought he, he's the youngest city councilman to ever be elected in the city of Hillsburg. A lot of positives there, so if you get a chance to meet with him, I would encourage it. Additionally, one thing, just on a family note, I told my son I would mention it, but he did his first mass as altar boy at St. Joseph's, so I was pretty proud of him. He did a great job. Anyway, sorry.
Supervisor Hemmingson.
Yes, thank you. Had a Citizens Advisory Committee meeting at Pelican Bay State Prison. If any of you are interested in finding employment there, they have right, at the time of the meeting, had 138 open positions, open vacancies right now. They run about 200 short every day. So, they are in desperate need of finding people to fill positions. The academies have started back up again. It's about a year-long process, so they do pay you to go to the academy. So, if anybody knows anybody that's, pardon me?
You have to be 25.
21, I think. I don't think you have to be 25. I could be wrong. But, anyway, they're in need of people out there. Had a meeting with staff on possibilities of some airport funding. As Supervisor Sullivan stated earlier, there was a chamber mixer at his place of business with Humboldt Delmarque Film Commission that I attended. That was pretty interesting. Supervisor McClure said Jared Huffman was in town. I did get a chance to meet with him on a couple of different occasions. One, the meeting that Supervisor McClure was talking about. The other was on Last Chance Grade. He came up and we toured Last Chance Grade. Caltrans had a lane closure, took us up there. We walked from one end of Last Chance Grade to the other. The downhill portion wasn't too bad. The uphill portion for an old man was a little taxing, but we made it through. But, it was quite a, it was quite an ordeal. It was good to see him. He was very interested, so hopefully some federal monies will come through for some studies to find an alternative route, which is what we're looking for. As Supervisor Sullivan said, we had a meeting with the sheriff and Doyle Shamely, interested in Forest Service issues. Our forests, in my opinion, if we don't do some management of our forests, they are gonna burn up for no value whatsoever, so I think we need to utilize the value that's there the best we can. Had a two-by-two with the Uroc Tribe. Supervisor Finnegan was there. We had some issues with dispatch that were discussed on 911 calls, so we thought we had that pretty well worked out, but whether we do or not is a little up in the air, I think. As Supervisor Sullivan said, the Tea Party put on a function, mostly to do a Santa's Workshop, come and bring a present. They had a little dinner, a little music. It was very nice, nice, it was a nice, nice function, so I was glad I went to that. There was also a light display at the fairgrounds. I don't know if any of you went through, but I think it was the cheerleaders that put on a light display, so went through that once with my wife, and then once with my daughter and grandkids. And, by the way, I am a new grandparent. My daughter had a son on the 30th of December, so that was, that was good. Enjoyed Christmas with, with family, friends. We had a Border Coast Regional Airport Authority meeting, which we're looking at financing issues with the RSA project, as well as taking care of mitigation for those projects and the terminal. I have met with Jim Wood. He called me and set up a meeting to meet with me. As Supervisor McClure said, he's running for Assembly. Seems to be a real down-to-earth guy, businessman, which is what I like to see. So, we had some pretty frank discussions about things. Looking forward to see how his election progresses. Had a local Transportation Commission meeting. Supervisor Sullivan was there, where we were asked to select a priority between the Fred Haake Drive project, which has been a project that's been a priority for the county for the last 12 years, and a relatively new project, which is the Calming Projects on 101 north and south of Crescent City, which I don't ever remember having to do before. It was very disappointing that the CTC was making us decide. They're the, they're the funders, so, you know, they would be picking a project that they felt deserved the funding, but they wanted us to either give up on a project that we had been behind for the last 12 years, or start on this new project. And for me, it was, I had some real issues with it. They're both good projects. They both need to be done, so how do you, basically, how do you choose one over the other? I mean, it all had to do with funding, and they were, they're the keepers of the purse, so I think that should have been their decision, not ours. We should have had, been able to leave both of those on priorities, which we were not, not able to do. But, we did pick, we chose to stay with Fred Haake Drive, because that project had been there for the last 12 years, and we, I think we wanted to show consistency, even though I waffled a little bit. Also, as Supervisor Sullivan alluded to, Mary Kay Vandevere retiring. I don't know if she has retired, but is supposed to retire shortly, I think she has, from the Forest Service. She was our District Ranger, and they're looking for a replacement. Also got a call, a personal call, from Julie Renary, who also retired. She was actually, had retired about an hour before she called me, but she, she did want to call me and let me know that she really appreciated everything that we did up here, working with our RAC Committee. And, I have to say that Julie has been one of those Forest Service employees that has always been helpful, you know, very good at finding information and keeping us informed. She is one of the people that we do have a good communication process with, and hopefully we'll get a District Ranger, as Supervisor Sullivan said. Hopefully we'll get a District Ranger that will work as well with us as she did. She's not a District Ranger. She's a public relations person, so she's very good at her job. She's out of Humboldt County. But it was nice to hear from her. It was nice to get that call. That's about it for me.
Supervisor Gitlin.
Thank you Chairman Finnegan. Well, shortly after the last year meeting, it seems like such a long time ago, December 10th meeting, our Daily Bread Ministries partner and our Take a Bite Out of Light volunteers cleared two heavily overgrown vacant lots facing one another on the northeast and southeast corners of Mackin and Inyo Streets. These two projects completed a list of 10 projects for calendar year 2013, since we've been part of this Take a Bite Out of Light program, where volunteers have assisted in cleanup efforts on both private and public property. Very proud to say each of these products were conducted and completed without one taxpayer dollar. And, again, thank you to our Daily Bread Ministries volunteers and all the volunteer efforts. Took some time off to visit with family in Southern California, in Provo, Utah, for three weeks. And during that time, in Provo, I had an opportunity to fulfill a lifetime fantasy of mine, which is to talk to my Major League Baseball icon idol, which is Pittsburgh Pirates 1960 pitcher Vernon Law. And I interviewed him. I guess "interviewed" is the wrong word. We just had a nice chat about politics and baseball, and baseball and politics, for a better part of four hours in his home in Provo, Utah. He's 84 years old. He looks like he can strike out the Yankees 1-2-3. Great guy, and I really enjoyed meeting with him. He's married 63 years, parents of six children, including Major League Baseball player Vance Law, retired, of course. 31 grandchildren, 30 great-grandchildren, 30 great-grandchildren. Very honored to have an opportunity to visit with him. Upon my return to Delmarque County, January 2nd, I attended the Delmarque Solid Waste Management Pre-Agenda meeting at the transfer station. As the new chairman of the authority, I have asked for a review of a number of ordinances. Commissioners will decide if there's reason to amend, revoke, or leave intact these ordinances. The authority will review these ordinances at the February meeting, and the authority conducted its first meeting of the year, and, as was mentioned, we had an opportunity to meet with the R3 consultants who've begun the study on the solid waste management operation, and that study should be complete within six to eight weeks. Saturday, I attended the Delmarque County Crescent City Chamber of Commerce Retreat. The Chamber announced the course of the 50-year anniversary of the 1964 tsunami celebration, which, wrong word, celebration, that event that took place will be commemorating it during the period of time, March 19th to 26th. It's also been a record-breaking year for the visitor center, and here are some of the statistics. 22,310 visits to the center. That's a 16.8% increase over calendar year 2012. That's also, we've kept the center open for Saturdays through Sea Cruise Weekend, where an additional 708 visitors came into the offices at the visitor's center. Not surprisingly, most of those visitors are from California, and the rest, majority of those remaining, about 50%, Oregon and Washington were the other, other leading states. Canadians represented about half of all visitors to Delmarque County. So, I want to offer congratulations to Chamber Director and Executive Director and Visitors Bureau Executive Director Jeff Palmer and all his staff. 2014 goals were established. The top priorities for the Chamber will be to build Chamber membership. Advocacy will be very high on the Chamber priority list. It's number two, taking more public positions that affect our local businesses, and recruitment and retention of new businesses was the other top priority. Saturday night, I attended the retirement of Delmarque County Detective Sergeant Steve Morris at the Elks Lodge. Steve and I met a number of times last year. I found him to be very helpful to me on a number of occasions, and of course Angie and I wish him the best in his retirement. Also met with a constituent who asked me to participate in a cemetery cleanup landscape project Saturday. The odd fellows portion of the cemetery has really become overgrown and needs some serious landscape group. The gravestones, and had an opportunity to look at some of those gravestones that come from the 19th century. It's really a walkback in history. They've become really quite overgrown, and the landscape gardening needs need to be stepped up, so the Take a Bite Out of Light program will provide some volunteers and equipment necessary to manicure this very hallowed ground. The operation is scheduled for Saturday, February 22nd. Yesterday, I was invited by constituent Joan Miles from College of the Redwoods to attend a meeting announcing the viewing of a film produced by former Labor Secretary Robert Reich. The film, Inequality for All, will be shown free of charge at the College of the Redwoods Thursday, February 20th. I'd also like to invite my colleagues on this board, and those of you in the audience, to come to Crescent Elk Auditorium tomorrow at 6:00 for an academic awards presentation to the best students. For all nine district schools, a male and a female student from each of those schools, plus a male and female from the entire district, will be recognized with cash awards. This promises to be a great evening, recognizing academic excellence, moral character, and work ethic to the best of our youth in Delmarque County. And, on a final note, I see a lot of green shirts in front of me. I know that we are planning a February 4th meeting. I would like to agendize the resolution of decoloration for the February 11th meeting for Board of Supervisors. That is my report, sir. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna be brief, since you've, a lot of us attended the same meetings. I also went to the Toys for Tots, sponsored by the Tea Party, dinner, took some toys there. Met regarding JPA financing for the airport. Also met regarding the fair and formation of a special district and possible taxation. Met with county council regarding the tri-agency. Had an airport JPA meeting. Met with the grand jury. Had a first five meeting, Children and Families Commission. Had pizza with Congressman Huffman. Discussed several issues. Also had the Uroc Two-by-Two with Supervisor Hemmingson and with the sheriff and the Uroc Tribe regarding mainly 911 calls and, and safety officers' protection in Klamath. Also, attended with Congressman Huffman the show-me trip on Last Chance Grade. And the interesting thing there is I also was in the 2003 study, and what they were saying was that they were, the most cost-efficient way to stabilize that roadway was the one that they took, which was supposed to be $900,000, which, it's more than millions a year, but it's semantics. And, so what they explained this time, because I was fortunate enough to be with some of the engineers, actually, is stabilizing the road means trying to keep the road open when it slips and it falls, but the idea of ever stabilizing that road, not the roadway, but the road, is impossible, because that whole hillside is going. So, it was nice to finally get that admission and be working on a real solution. Also, went to the last game of candlestick, which was a heck of a lot of fun. Had my daughter for Christmas and some of her friends, which was equally as much fun. Went to another airport JPA meeting, met with Jim Wood for the Assembly. Had a very interesting conversation. Participated in a few State Association officer calls, and had an opportunity to sit on Judy LaCorte, which was very interesting as well. And so with that, we are going to open up the public comment. Any member of the public may address the board on any issue, either on or off the agenda. However, if it is on the agenda, I might ask that you keep your comments until that item arises. Otherwise, we'll just have you speak the once. So, it looks like you got a heck of a sign-up sheet. I would ask you to have, since it looks like there's an hour's worth of people to talk, if you're gonna repeat, please don't. Just say what they said, in, in way in, if you would please, and noting also that there will be a presentation workshop regarding the state of Jefferson coming up in February. So, who we got? I want to hear from her.
Good morning. My name's Linda Sutter. I'm in David Finnegan's area. And this is Bailey Elizabeth. Her first class in government. Okay. I'd just like to say, first off, Happy New Year. And, Ms. McClure, I really appreciate you talking about the Jefferson State thing. Right now, personally, I oppose Jefferson State. I'm not a follower. I think there's some serious things people need to consider, and I don't think that they have the information right now. The reason I'm here today is I got an email that, and this is old news, I'm sure you're aware of it. It was on ABC Television News, where a local person went into the hospital with appendicitis attack and received a bill for $43,000 to have his appendix removed. Quite frankly, if I needed to have my appendix removed, I think I'd go to the local veterinarian. Maybe he charged me $1,800, $2,500. But, I worry about that because who can afford that kind of bill, even with, after 20%, I mean, after everything was paid for, the guy ended up with a $12,000 bill, which is atrocious. But, I do have to say, I was in the hospital myself on Sunday. The staff there are incredible. I mean, Barna, we've got really, really good people. They, they investigate everything to make sure that you're gonna be okay if they release you. And, I don't know what the Sutter Coast Hospital situation is right now. It's been kind of hard for me to follow, but if you guys have any say in the matter, or, I don't know, but please take into consideration that we can't afford this kind of hospitalization. So, if that means if we can get Asante up here or something like that, that's something to investigate. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Leroy Beaver, 1560 El Monte Road. I'm here to, just to ask a few questions about your hiring practice in the county. If all departments work the same way, I checked the road department. If it's a permanent job, they list it in the paper for three weeks. Gives everybody a chance to apply for it, and then they have interviews. I know the building department has the same thing. But then, we go to the county doctor, and that was handled in about 48 hours. I called Michael Sullivan on Friday, and by the next board meeting, we already fired a doctor and hired a new one, and it's a $30,000, $40,000 job. I think there are other doctors should have a chance to apply for this. I mean, if the county has a hiring practice, why isn't it followed through every branch of the county, is my point. And, you can see where, if it's hired or done the way this one was done, you're gonna get some conflict, because pretty soon a person could go out and say, "Hey, I got a $30,000 job. If I give it to you, what do I get?" You know? I'm not saying it's happening, but it's possible, and why, why don't we protect ourselves before it happens? I think we have a problem here, and I'm gonna use Gitlin's slogan for his campaign. "We have a problem. Let's fix it."
Thank you. Next.
Aaron Funk, 1661 West Klamath Beach Road in Klamath, California. Before I make my remarks, I'd like to address Supervisor McClure's statement there. I too disagree with that process. We had nothing to do with that whatsoever, and Mike and I have discussed that also. It was a wrong approach, and we are not on that committee. We're not associated with the committee. We didn't know about it till after it happened. The remarks, as far as the number of phone calls, excuse me, it hasn't become an issue yet for phone calls, I think, but I expect that that's gonna happen. And Supervisor Hemmingson has not received any calls, but he has received over 137 signatures, and we have over 200 from his district now, over 200 from Supervisor Sullivan's district also. Almost a total of 1,000, and we'll be, keep going beyond that also. I think what happens here, what needs to happen here, is examining three questions. And the first one, is this process legal? And the answer is yes. The framers of the Constitution envisioned states, as they grew, population would grow irregularly, that there'd be centers that had greater population, and therefore eventually greater authority over those lesser populated portions of the state. And that's what's happened here in California. So, they incorporated in the Constitution of the United States of America Article 4, Section 3, which gives to the counties, this- Article 4, Section 3, which gives to the counties this process for separating from a state. And that is going ahead and getting the county boards of supervisors in this case, and typically so, to approve the separation and altogether approach to the legislature for the Assembly and for the Senate to okay it, pass it on to the United States Congress for their okay, and it becomes at that point a new state. The dictatorship, and I use that word cautiously, that we have right now in the state of California, does warrant a real, real strong look, the fact that very few people up here have no authority whatsoever in our legislative decisions and our administrative execution of that legislation, and that the only way possible to rectify that is to create a new state with similar likes and dislikes, needs, capacities, geographies, and resources with other counties within that new state. The second part is, is it possible? In 1992, an effort such as this actually gained 27 counties approving the separation of the state of California north-south and the creation of a new state. It went from there to the Assembly, and the democratically-controlled Assembly led by Willie Brown actually approved of the state being divided. It went to the state senate, and it got bottled up, as I understand, in committee, and the session expired before it could come out. I think the last part of that, is it necessary? And the fact that we have a lack of representation, not a dearth of that, but a lack of reputation, and a whole bunch of issues, regulations and controlled invasion of our borders and rampant regulations on our businesses mandated this happen, and we'll be doing that in different form. Thank you.
Thank you. You might put that up on the dice so they can see when their time.
And if I could work with you to work out a new date for that.
I will be working with you.
Cool, thanks.
I'm going to excuse myself for a drink of water. It's not that I'm not listening. I'll be right back.
I'm Don Spurian, 500 Sunrise. I second what Aaron had just, thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Gee, I thought this would be my last time having to be here.
We thought a lot of the time was going to be your last time. That's what you told us.
Yeah, well, it's okay, David. I got a call at 8:15 on the 28th.
Identify yourself, please.
I'm Susan White. Used to live at 344 North Pebble Beach Drive, but it is gone. But I wanted to bring to your attention that I'm glad that this year's an election year for our sheriff. I'm under the, oh, and also acting DA, we're hoping that she's acting way out. I got a call about eight, oh, it was 8:15 at night. I had just turned over the keys to the new owner, and I was blessed with a phone call from the sheriff's department announcing that they had somebody handcuffed inside my house. Gee, that's not a surprise, is it? After 147 break-ins from my house, they actually caught somebody. And this person was arrested. And so when they went in front of the district attorney, it wasn't 411 with her. She did not know that I did not own the house anymore, and she dropped the charges on him. So let's see, what the new owners came across. The new owners filed charges against, are filing charges against the county and the sheriff's department for letting this person go. I was rudely treated because I would not bring forth the names of the people that owned the house. I figured it was none of my business to the sheriff's office calling me and telling me that where was I? Why wasn't I at the house? Well, I didn't own the house anymore. But Sheriff Wilson has tap danced around this situation. We have an acting DA that is not acting. She's not, she's performing very well in her duties, as you also know. I am forthwith telling you that I am going to bankrupt you guys. I've come to a conclusion that I'm going to take care of Susan White and my daughter. So I'm letting you guys know in previous thing that I am filing charges against the county. And like Mr. Finnegan always told me when I used to go in to see him during the time that he was the real estate person for the woods, I am going to take care of myself for a change. And thank you so much. I will see you guys in litigation. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Next, please.
Chuck Tweed, 1300 Ferndale Lane. I run the signatures for the State of Jefferson. We don't sit, go, set up in front of city, county, or state federal buildings. We only set up in front of businesses that invite us to there. I have 1,500 already validated signatures. I've got almost this many more that haven't been validated yet. We set up for about four hours a day throughout the community, and looking forward to turn these over to you when we get all of our signatures validated. And we'd never do a negative declaration, by the way. We don't approach people in parking lots. We let them come to us and they ask questions. And so, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good morning. Happy New Year. Thank you. Supervisor Finnegan, first of all, I'd like to congratulate you and thank you for your service to CSAC as its first-time-ever Delnort County representative as president of CSAC. Dave, I'm proud of you. I know the community is too, and this board certainly I'm sure is. But anyway, I'm here. I thought possibly the State of Jefferson issue would be on the agenda, but I know it's going to be on some future agenda. But I'd like to relate just a couple of things about that, my own experiences being a board member here for eight years, what I went through representing this county. Had some very important meetings. The meetings that I used to attend, in fact, Dave, I think you represented the county at the, what's now called the Secure Rural Schools issue with our timber money in Reno. I spent seven years traveling to Reno, the last few at John Sclock's Nugget. And we had some unbelievable meetings, as you well know, with those folks. And the last meeting in 2006, I was met at the breakfast door on our last day by Marilyn Schaefer, the Curry County Commissioner then and Chair, and invited me to attend a breakfast table with commissioners from all four Southern Oregon counties, which I thought was quite an honor. Of course, Marilyn and I worked very well with Dave and others on the board back in those days on the Board of Coast Economic Zone, and then the result at the JPA at the airport. But anyway, I sat down with those folks, and the discussion that we had was basically about trying to go back to our counties and formulate a series of meetings, at least once a year, maybe twice a year, with the representatives of the four Southern Oregon counties, three Northern California counties. And then everybody started laughing, and the discussions switched from meetings to the State of Jefferson. And it became quite a discussion, and we were supposed to go back to our counties and to go through our boards to approve starting these meetings. Unfortunately, I have to share that we all came back to our counties. We had got so busy with all kinds of county business, as you well know. We never had that initial meeting back in 2006, 2007. And I always look back on that, and I thought, you know, we needed to have that series of meetings started to get the dialogue started. I bought a book from a bookstore here locally. And I don't read too many books, but I would highly suggest that if you have a chance, it might be a great book. And it is The Elusive State of Jefferson by Peter Loffer. He's a PhD out of University of Oregon on the history of the State of Jefferson. And I got up in the middle of the night, which is very unusual for me to read a book, but it was unbelievable to me to look back over the years to read this. But I would like to see us at least take a look at this and give a good, clear opportunity for this board to look at it and hopefully pass it. And I want to thank you all for giving me that opportunity.
Thank you, Supervisor Blackburn.
Sorry I went over the time.
All right. Next, please.
How y'all doing? My name's Dan Potts out of the 221 Turge Tree Road in Crescent City, or I think it's county. I'm also the president of the Student Senate for the College of the Redwoods and the whole district, so I represent about 6,000 students on Mendocino, Delnort, and Eureka on Bull County. I am actually the person also from the Roosevelt Institute Campus Network, and I am the one putting on the event this, on the 20th of February at 2:00 for Robert Reich's movie Inequality for All. And I invite all of you to come at 2:00, 2:00 in the afternoon's Thursday. It's at the college, it's probably be in room DM 29. Then after the movie, it'll be about an hour and a half long. Afterwards, Robert Reich is actually, we're doing a webinar, I think that's how you say it, a live webinar with Robert Reich for about a half an hour from 3:30 to 4:00. And then after that, we're going to have a small panel. Eli Nafah, Professor Eli Nafah, and Professor Philip Mankus, who's a sociology professor out there, and myself will probably be on that panel to address anybody who has any questions, you know, the best we can. In addition, I wanted to get back with Mike. You asked me a question about a year and a half ago about Measure Q funds, and I didn't really know a lot about it, even though at that time I didn't have this position as the president of the Student Senate. But I have attended several. I'm also on the Committee for the Funding for the College, and then I attended a Measure Q funding meeting. As far as I know, we do have the monies allocated for Measure Q to expand our biology lab, which was supposed to happen a long time ago, but they're finally getting to that. So this summer, they're supposed to break ground on that. So, which is a huge benefit for our community and our campus, especially with the LBM program.
Yeah, just on the Measure Q, just for the audience and the people listening, it's, when you pay your property taxes, you pay a tax assessment to College of the Redwoods. Part of the deal when Measure Q passed locally was they were supposed to build out the life sciences lab. That's what Dan's talking about. So we still want that to happen.
We did utilize Measure Q funds to do earthquake stabilization on our campus. So that, that was the initial burst of money that came in, and it got, and that's where all that funds. So, and that stuff there is not that visual eye candy that everybody sees because it's all internal structural kind of stuff. But that is, you know, I've been trying to push that, the biology lab quite a bit, the best that I can, because we have a definitive need for that, especially pushing or trying to make sure that we have our constituents and our students properly trained for the LBM programs and other programs, and then doing that, LBN RN Bridge, and now possibly creating an RN program here so our, so the people here can get that proper education instead of having to travel out of the county. So.
Thank you.
If you, I invite any of you, if you ever have any questions about the college or anything like that, I am always available. And most of you, I've talked to before. My name's Dan Potts. I've talked to you before in the airport and stuff. But I have a card. I'll make sure I hand out some cards.
Good. The date on that again was the 20th?
The 20th, February 20th.
Okay, thanks very much.
At 2:00. I probably, I'm going to do a brief.
I'm going to ask you to wrap it up.
Oh, okay. So, yeah.
See you then. Next, please. That's it? Okay, any other public comments? All right, bear with me.
I'd just like to add one thing that to let the public know that we have two openings on the Water Quality Board for Northern California, and they're looking for two women because they try to make it a gender balance application. And you can go on the governor's website and take a look.
Okay, so we're running behind, so bear with me while we jump around a little bit here. I'm going to take the consent agenda. Can I get a motion, please?
So, move in a second on the consent agenda. Any public comments?
Chair Finnegan, I'd like to pull two items from the consent agenda.
And that would be for discussion items 16 and 17. All right, so we're going to ahead and vote on the consent agenda minus items 16 and 17 for further discussion. I'll poll vote, please, Tony.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes, I need to recuse myself on item four and five.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Chair Finnegan?
Yes. Okay, within the consent agenda, there was an item here that really saddens me away in a way, but gives me great pleasure because it's not very often, I mean, it's often that we ask people to step up and participate in the governmental process, but it's not very often that we have somebody that sticks around for an awful long time once they get a taste of what's going on. And there's an exception to that. The exception happens to be the person that served the Planning Commission for District 5. So, in that consent agenda was a resolution from the Board of Supervisors, County of Delnort honoring Jesse LaForest, whereas Mr. Jesse LaForest served the County of Delnort Planning Commission since 1977, and whereas Mr. LaForest's 17-year term on the Planning Commission was clearly driven by his commitment to public service and his desire to enhance and improve the community in which he lives. And whereas Mr. LaForest distinguished himself as a strong advocate for planning principles and practices geared to improve quality of life issues for all citizens of the community, and whereas Mr. LaForest served this county with unquestionable integrity, fairness, and devotion to duty, always willing to listen to new ideas, yet steadfast in his aim to protect and preserve the qualities, values, and resources that characterize the county he truly loves. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the County of Delnort Board of Supervisors adopt this resolution in honor of Jesse LaForest to thank him for his 17 years of public service, for his commitment to our community, and proudly recognize and express our sincere appreciation of Mr. LaForest for his outstanding service to this County of Delnort, passed and adopted anonymously unanimously on this 14th day, January. Jesse? Somebody corrected me. I guess I'll have to look at the tape. I said 1777, but I knew you were one of the forefathers.
Well, I was very pleased to do it. I really was. It was, it was always to me, my way of giving back to the county that I do love. That's it.
Well, and you need to know that the feedback that I got through the years of the different groups that went through there, you were always the calming voice and the one that really looked at things very analytically and fairly. So, thank you.
It's because I was trying to figure out what was going on.
Thanks very much, yes. All right, with that, we're going to go ahead to our 10:30 item that was scheduled. And that would be item number, what do we got? Number 24 is to conduct a public hearing regarding the adoption of a resolution of application of the local Formation Committee, ALAFCO, to form a recreation and parks district for the purpose of maintaining and operating the Delnort County Fairgrounds as requested by the 41st District Ag Association. Mr. Hatfield, Randy, you want to kick that off for us?
Thank you. My name is Randy Hatfield. I'm the fair manager. As you all know, a few years ago, I won't go back through the whole story, that we lost our funding to, from the state through horse racing and what have you, and then they put us into the general fund, and that was the beginning of the end. We've been working off of, off reserves for the last couple of years, and our money's going to run out in 2016, just after the 2016 fair. In the interim, through this process, we got together with some folks. The fair board had come up with some brainstorming ideas and did some studies, did a survey, and come up with the recommendation. And the action to go to ALAFCO to form a special district for the fair, and to, based on the results of the survey, tried to pass a quarter percent sales tax in the November 2014 election. There's a lot of work to be done, and this is a kind of groundbreaking effort, I think, throughout the fair industry, where they're really the only ones that are doing it. And I think this is going to work, fits for the Delnort County Fair, and it'll keep the fair rolling and beyond the 2016. And as well, it gives the new board of directors a chance to figure out which direction they're going to go on a long-term basis with the privatization, partnerships, and so forth.
Okay, so that sets the stage. What we're going to do is, what's being asked is for this board to adopt a resolution to initiate the ALAFCO process. So with that, I'm going to open up the public hearing. So any member of the public now to open up the public hearing, so any member of the public now please speak on potential resolution for introducing to the LAFCO the formation of a special district, including proposal for a tax.
Mr. Chair, if I could just clarify, what we're doing right now in the public hearing is, is basically, we're going to be voting on whether to put it on the ballot or not, that's basically the consensus of what this decision is today.
Right.
Yeah.
Actually, is to put it to LAFCO, and then LAFCO will be the, the one that will put it on for the election, so it's the first step in the process, rather than having to put the election first. Any other member of the board wants to, because the public hearing is now open, I'll entertain any comments from board members first.
Chair Finnegan, I just, and again, to clarify and following up with Supervisor Sullivan's statement, said election, which would be in November, would require a two-thirds vote, I think the public needs to know that it needs to pass overwhelmingly.
Okay, any member of the public wish to comment on this?
Good morning, Jerry Cochran, ex-assessor, I fully agree with, with the concept of going to the voter to, for approval, there's just no other way for our local fair to continue operating unless we do that, so I'm in, in favor of the board moving ahead with that. Oh, Martha, that Maguire will be here on Saturday the eighteenth, not the twenty-second.
Well, he switched around.
No, he's going to be here the eighteenth.
Jim Woods?
Yeah, there you go, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other member of the public?
Good morning, Mary Wilson, Del Norte County, the city limits, I think it's a good idea, I'm in favor of moving ahead with this type of approach, I think that the district has done a good job in the past, and saw what was coming down the road, and, and saved their monies, and, and were very wise in being able to provide the fair to our community these past couple of years, and, and I think this would be a good option, and again, it leaves the choice with the public, but I think it is, sounds like a good plan, thank you.
Any other member of the public wish to weigh in on the adoption of a resolution?
My name is Kevin Hartwick, obviously a member of the Fair Board and supportive of the plan, I just want to reconfirm some of the points that were made in the past to the comfort of those that know that this is not just a, a solving the issue with a little bit of money. The issue goes on, the public-private partnerships will exist, and we're aggressively looking for partners to participate in the process of self-sufficiency, and so the community should know that, that is built into every, every discussion we have, so appreciate the opportunity and hope you support this measure.
Anybody else? Okay, then with that, I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment period, I'm going to close the public hearing, bring it back to the board and ask for a motion on the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
So moved and seconded to adopt a resolution of application by the County of Del Norte requesting that LAFCO Commission of Del Norte County take proceedings for the formation of the Del Norte County Fairgrounds Recreation and Park District, poll the vote, please.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Gatlin?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Chair Finnegan?
Yes. With that, I'm going to go back and ask for a report by the County Administrative Officer of what he's been doing.
Briefly, attended a number of the meetings that the, the board members had made, including the Airport Finance Meeting, and also attended a meeting between Del Norte Ambulance and Sutter Coast, have been preparing a presentation directed by the board that will be utilized as part of some meetings with the Uroq Tribe and Smith River Rancheria to kind of explain what our services are, what our financial situation is on an annual basis, and it'll probably be something that would be, also be advantageous to have on our website, so the, the general public will have a better understanding, too. Have talked to the Ag Department a little bit in regards to conditions in the Ag community with the lack of rainfall this winter and the low water year, should be getting some information back on that. Met with the Solid Waste Consultant, who's addressing some of the items and goals that were outlined in the RFP, and also had a meeting with the Smith River Fire Protection District in regards to the dispatch agreement that's been proposed, I believe we'll have some follow-up meetings with the other districts coming soon, the sheriff was also with me at that meeting, and one of the more enjoyable items, other than the holidays, was that Saturday was the kickoff for youth basketball, and if anybody is not familiar with that program, John Horner is the coordinator, we have about four hundred kids, and I was fortunate to spend about four hours at the rec gym observing, as well as participating as a coach and a parent, I coached my daughter's team, and if anybody wants some free entertainment, that's the place to go, because you can't go there and not have fun, but it's an excellent program, a lot of kids, a lot of parents, a lot of grandparents, a lot of family, a lot of friends, and it's an excellent program, one of our, one of our shiny examples. Yesterday, I attended the OES meeting, it's a planning meeting for the full-scale evacuation that's going to coincide with the harbor ribbon cutting, you're going to hear a lot of this on the radio, I heard Renee this morning talking about the T-shirts, if you haven't heard that, I hope she says it again, they had a little bit of a faux pas in spelling, but there are going to be some shirts that will spell, were spelled a little bit incorrectly, but they're, it's interesting, she'll have it on the radio, I'm sure, safely, was spelled incorrectly, but it was, it was, it was funny, there were about seventy-five people at this meeting, which was amazing, you know, obviously, that group is made up of just about every agency in the county, a lot of volunteers, and like I said, they're going to be doing a lot of advertising, because this is, there's going to be a walking tour, and Cindy will be here at the first meeting in February with a report to better publicize this, but you're going to be hearing a lot about it, and the full-scale evacuation is similar to the one that was done a few years ago, and we would hope for more participation in that if at all possible, obviously schedules, so those were the highlights, and like everybody else, I very much enjoyed the holidays with family.
Mr. Chair, if I could just dovetail on Wajay's, I got to give a lot of kudos to John Horner and that basketball program, that every year, it seems to add more kids to it, it's, you get a lot of community out for that, and it's a great experience, and it's really, really well-run, and I know my son's been in there, and I've been a participant on both sides of it when I was a lot younger, being a player on the rec field, so besides coaching it, so it, well done.
Yeah, believe, believe it or not, I played in that league when I was in the fifth and sixth grade, too. I would like to say that IT also?
Believe that.
IT has helped out immensely with the online participation and registration, and so that, I think, made it even smoother this year.
Good, thank you, we're going to jump back to the item sixteen and seventeen on the consent agenda that was pulled, Supervisor Gatlin, what's your questions on that one there?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Finnegan, Gary, could you, because I know we have an ongoing practice of, because we don't have a psychiatric facility or psychiatrist in town, we have a practice of sending our people, who are the most vulnerable in our community, on these long ambulance drives, and I'm, I'd just like you to talk about sixteen, what this one is all about, I guess it's, this is for one?
I'm going to ask you to take sixteen and seventeen together.
Yes, I think that's what it is, sixteen and seventeen, because they are, they are connected, so, Mr. Bligh, could you just explain what this one's all about?
These are, these are facilities in case the primary facilities are unavailable, these are backup facilities that we use in Northern California.
All right, so, and again, because it's connected to this, I read in the paper that Sutter Health and Sutter Coast has offered to fund a psychiatric position, what discussions are going on to change this conversation and have a facility here to serve these people who are most vulnerable?
None that I know of.
Well, could we have that discussion, I'm hearing that Linda Horn has offered three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars a year to, for a psychiatrist, and I think it's in order to discuss it, can we expect that we can make this connection and make this happen, so these people don't have to be ambulanced out of this community?
You mean for the County of Del Norte to establish its own psychiatric inpatient facility?
Yes, I have, bring a psychiatrist up here, either on a part-time or full-time basis.
No, no, those are two separate things, if you have a-
Let's, let's, I'm going to filter this out, if we want to have a discussion in the future about initiating a proposal to do that line, this is a contract that expires in June of two thousand fourteen, that we're asking to weigh in on now.
Right.
So let's stick to that one, and then we can certainly initiate those other conversations if we want.
Well, I think if we don't have this discussion at some point in the future, this, this, continue, and I don't think that's the way to serve our, our those in greatest needs, so I'm going to vote against it.
Okay, can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, a motion is to move to approve to authorize the chair to sign agreement with St. Helena Hospital located in St. Helena and another one in Vallejo for inpatient hospital services for the period of July first, two thousand thirteen through June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen, not to exceed ten thousand eight hundred and seventy apiece, and as stated in the, in the discussion in summary, this agreement is necessary for the event our, our primary contractual inpatient facility is unavailable. Poll the vote, please.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Wait, okay, go ahead.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Gatlin?
No.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Chair Finnegan?
Yes.
I would, I would just like to, to clarify a point about psychiatric services for people who are in need of psychotropic medication, and are working through a, an assigned program with their psychiatrist, is different than the emergency placement that sometimes when people need hospitalization, and so I know that we have one psychiatrist right now that's in telemedicine, and is so booked that people can't get in until, I don't know how far out it is, and with this new addition that's going to possibly be at the clinic, we're going to be able to make sure that people's medication doesn't get disrupted, and their lives don't get disrupted, and that's the kind of psych services that we're talking about at this point.
All right, and with that, we're going to go to eleven o'clock time guidance, which is a presentation from the Area One Agency on Aging. Maggie, if you want to introduce yourself?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for allowing me to come and speak to you all today, my name is Maggie Craft, I'm the Executive Director of the Area One Agency on Aging, and I was here, seems like yesterday, but it was a few months back, and I talked to you about the services generally that our organization provides, so I wanted to, to kind of add on to that another part, but I first wanted to introduce a couple of our staff members, our Del Norte area staff members who are here, we have Sharon Jordan, who is with our RSVP program, and also information assistance, and Helen Duverne, who is our High Cap staff, excuse me, staff person, they're, and they both, they're both working really hard, so the fact that they're here today, I know they're anxious to get back to the office, but I appreciate them coming, and, and so you can get their faces. The rumors of High Cap's demise in Del Norte County have been grossly exaggerated, I, how does that saying go, where the rumors of my death have been premature or something? We are running full, and Helen actually is working full-time, so we are there, both of them are at the Senior Center, they have offices there, and, and so we encourage people to, to realize they're there, and if they want to volunteer, or need help with Medicare issues, or if they need information assistance about services in the community, please, these are the ladies, so. I also wanted to, to thank Roger for serving on our Advisory Council, he drives to Humboldt County every couple of months to serve for us, we appreciate that, and one of our board members is sitting in the back, I just want to give a shout out to Jan Morehouse, who is on our board here, one of the representatives for Del Norte County, so, thank you, Jan. Okay, so what I wanted to do today is, is talk a little bit about the area plan, which is a process that the area agency goes through, we create an area plan every four years, and we update it every year, and I wanted to start by giving you some, some information about the, the background of the people, the seniors and older adults in the county, and one of the thing, and so on the screen, on my screen anyway, and I think you all have the handout, so, is that, oh, that's me, sorry about that, so I, I just wanted to say that Humboldt and Del Norte, yeah, it's not up there, so, oh well, so you guys are just imagining, okay, you guys are just, yeah, okay, I'll keep going, though, so, to compare Humboldt and Del Norte Counties, many of these numbers are very similar, but there are some areas that, that I see differences, in Del Norte County, you have twenty-one percent of the people sixty-plus in the labor force, whereas in Humboldt County, it's only ten percent. Now, there may be a lot of different reasons for that, it might be that they're just not able to work, but, but you have, you have more people over sixty working up here than they do, percentage-wise, than in Humboldt County. In Del Norte, fifty-five percent of the folks over sixty who are living in poverty are men, whereas in Humboldt, sixty-five percent are women, so that's kind of a difference, that's a big difference. The people living alone are, still, my majority are women, here it's sixty-five percent of seniors are women, and in Humboldt, it's sixty-eight percent. Geographically isolated, thirty-two percent here, and twenty-four percent, although I'd argue that both counties are geographically isolated from the rest of the state, but that's not how they look at it. And then twenty-three percent, if you look at the labor, grandparents raising their grandchildren, this is an issue in both counties, twenty-three percent of those people, those grandparents raising grandchildren in Del Norte are in the labor force, as compared to thirty-eight percent in Humboldt County. I'm, I'm not going to interpret what all these differences mean, but I thought I'd just point them out to you, and, but you have the same number of, or three in ten people relying on Social Security as their only source of income in both counties, and these are the Humboldt numbers, but I went through most of the differences. So I wanted to talk about why we're here, our mandates, and, and how that relates to the, the county, who we serve, and our funding, and the area plan a little bit. So, we're, we're, the Older Americans Act, and I mentioned this last time I was here, requires that there is an area agency in every single part of the, the country, and our area agency serves Del Norte and Humboldt Counties, we're the conduit for federal, federal Older Americans Act money, and that is, that is parceled out to the different services that they require, that money is not kept up with any kind of growth in seniors, any kind of inflation, and in fact, with the sequester, it was cut, so we're, we're doing more with less, or trying to even do the same amount with less. This, the federal government and the state require that we do the four-year plan with annual updates, and when I, we talk about the area plan and my, my, our area plan administrative budget, that budget's not overhead, this is a budget that works to do the outreach and organization of the area plan, and I'll give you a list of the things we do with that. The High Cap program and the RSVP programs, the programs that these ladies work in, are funded by different mechanisms, but also through the federal government. So, federal government, this is a long list, just to let you know, we're supposed to serve everyone sixty-plus, but we're also supposed to target all these people, so, who are sixty-plus, so it's serve everybody, but focus on this group, but if somebody doesn't fit into this category, excuse me, comes for services, serve them, too, so sixty-plus, basically, but you can see from this list, a lot of these, this, these categories are definitely rural areas, older Native Americans, and all these other categories are across, across all counties. So, how do we do this? How do we plan when we have less funding? A lot of the funding is tied up in specific mandates already, and the population is growing, and the needs are increasingly complicated, that's what we look at, this just gives you a picture of a, of the difference in funding between a couple of years, and the only reason that we, we, the only reason this year looks a little better is that Humboldt County this year just decided to increase the amount of funding they gave, they're giving us to do the work we do for the county, they had cut us back- a little better is that Humboldt County this year just decided to increase the amount of funding they gave, they're giving us to do the work we do for the county. Um, they had cut us back more than two-thirds for the last three years, and they've decided to come back. Um, and I'll talk about the reason for that. Uh, so to let you know, in terms of those federal dollars, we spend approximately eight percent of these, of these funds in Del Norte County. Um, the way we, we look at that is we match, we look at the population, um, and eighteen percent, roughly eighteen percent of the seniors in the two-county area are in Del Norte County. So we try to minimally hit the eighteen percent, um, for, overall for these, these services. Um, and, 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 and that's minimally. Sometimes we do more because sometimes just the cost of providing service up here is a little more expensive. Um, currently, the only additional funding that we receive for services here in Del Norte County is the seventeen thousand that, that you provide us, and we appreciate that, um, that you're doing that. But that amount is less than what you gave us in two thousand and two. This kind of shows you the breakup of where the ser, where the money goes in our programs. Contracted services is the biggest one. That is your nutrition programs and legal services. So the home-delivered meal program that Del Norte Senior Center runs, their lunch site programs, and legal services in the two counties. That's where the most of the money goes. And then these are the other programs split out that I wasn't going to really focus in, other than to say that the third one down, the green one, that's the area plan administration costs. And most, those are costs that the federal and state government require us to, to, to do things, and it's very difficult to cut there. If you want to talk about our overhead costs, if you look at the bolded one, real estate miscellaneous, it's kind of shoved in there. That's where our, our overhead costs are. Um, uh, just to give you a sense of, of where that fits. Um, so what we do with the area plan money is we support the advisory council. Um, our staff works with the advisory council to, to support them in their work, which has a lot to do with reaching out to the public, asking them about senior needs, and, and advocating for senior issues in the two-county area. We have a senior legislature. Uh, two seniors from the area are elected to serve on the state legislature. And very often, they develop legislation that, that the paid, um, senior legis, or paid legislators, the assembly and the senate, pick up and sponsor as official, um, official legislation. These are unpaid positions for the senior legislature. We also administer these contracts with the nutrition programs, and we monitor them to make sure they're complying with, with safe food handling, um, and all the rules and regulations that the federal government dumps on us. Uh, and I think I can say that dumps on us. Um, there's a lot that they expect us to do with the little bit of money they give the, the counties. We develop the four-year area plan, and we update it annually, which is a, a process, because one of the things we do there is we conduct the area plan hearings, where we go to both counties, and we hold hearings and ask seniors, caregivers, anybody who's interested to come and speak to us about senior needs within the framework of the work we do. And then a lot of what we do is reaching out to the community and talking to other organizations since, and trying to collaborate. Since there isn't enough money to just throw money at everything, a lot of the work we do is educating and, and sharing ideas and trying to come up with things to make sure we're not duplicating effort. Um, because there isn't just money, as you well know, to just throw at every problem. You can't just throw money at it to solve the problem. This is a little graph of the, um, the area plan funding, and you can see the top blue line, that's the federal, um, it says CDA, California Department of Aging, funding. That's what's happened to it since two thousand and two. Um, the red one, uh, is Humboldt, and that num, that line, I just fixed this to move it up, because it was going down also. So you can see where the level was with that. The, uh, purple line is grants and donations. Um, they come and go, and we're working on securing those always. And then the green line at the bottom is Del Norte County, which, um, has, was it, uh, just over twenty thousand in two thousand and two, is now the seventeen thousand. Here's another look at it. Um, the, uh, we've been, you could see, we've been running deficits in this for a while. We're having to use our reserve. One of the things that, we're a nonprofit organization, and so what we're doing is we're using our reserve to do the, the mandates that were given to the two counties to do, and the counties contract with us. You contract with us to do all these ser, this process so that you don't have to do it. So if our agency continues to lose money doing this, we eventually won't be there anymore. Um, and if we're not there, then you'll have a, you'll need to have a joint powers, um, with Humboldt County to, to, to manage these programs. The state won't split the money up. So, so what we're doing is, 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 um, struggling between, uh, doing this at an affordable price and, and losing the money to make sure we can even do it at all. Um, and so the boost from Humboldt County made a big difference. But you can see there's still a deficit, um, for this year of about sixty-two hundred dollars. So you have these, and I'm not going to go into them in detail other than to say, part of the way the area plan works is we have to come up with goals. And then under those goals, we come up with a whole slew of objectives. The binders is thick, and these objectives relate to the services that are being provided in the community. Um, so each, every four years, we can set new goals, but we, um, but we can't change the goals within that four-year period. We can change the objectives. So that's one of the things we'll be doing at the area plan is hearing from people and seeing how we might change the various objectives under each goal. Um, the one goal, this talks about access, independence, and involvement, really trying to support a creative, uh, comprehensive system of care. Um, and this goal really focuses on caregivers and, and access to information and training that they need to be caregivers. Um, caregiving is a big issue, as you probably imagine, for people who, who need assistance and for families who need help with caring. Um, also about, uh, this is around, um, protecting people's rights and resources so that they can, um, uh, they can make sure that they, they get the things that they need. And also to, to, this is where some of the advocacy activities come in. Um, looking at partnerships, um, and increasing, um, understanding of the needs of the population and avoiding duplication. And again, this is about advocating and, um, they look duplicative when you look at them all, but, but this is part of the mumbo jumbo of the state and the way they want us to do it. But when you get into the, um, actual objectives, they get a little more clearer. These are, real quickly, some of the concerns we see a lot in senior areas of affordable, safe, accessible housing and home modification so people can stay in their homes safely. Transportation to get around to their, um, their medical appointments, get food, whatever. Train caregivers, affordable train caregivers, and of course, access to medical care. These are, these are the big issues. So when this slide was done, we, it, the, your Del Norte, I wanted to give you the date. The Del Norte Public Hearing will be on March seventh at one PM, that's a Friday, at one PM, at the Del, excuse me, the Del Norte Senior Center. Um, and we'll have, um, information prior to that time, I think. Um, and I know that Supervisor Gitlin will have, will have that information prior to that time. So we'll share what our current plan is. We'll ask for feedback. And we'll also do some education about reminding people what we're required to do. Very often, we've had hearings before, um, in the Eel River area, and, um, they'll come and they'll say, you need, we need a lifeguard for seniors at the river. So when we go swimming, you know, somebody's there to watch us. And I think that's great, but it doesn't fall within our, our mandate to do that. So we kind of explain this, these are the things we have to do, and, and what would you like to see us do in those areas? Why does this matter? And you've seen the statistics, um, a little bit about what seniors are going through in your county. But these are the numbers. These are the proposed, projected population growth over the next fifty, less than fifty years. Um, I know some of us aren't thinking that far ahead, um, or don't need to, but, um, I don't want to be a hundred years old. Um, but if I am, I will be, I will be in this, this growth, this huge growth. We're seeing huge growth in this population and, 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 uh, marked decrease in your zero to twenty-four population. So the seniors are, are the growth population. And this, this isn't necessarily about Del Norte being a place to attract seniors. This is just looking at who is here and the general growth and what is happening. Um, and, and, and this recognizes that even the problems with the hospital, you have many seniors here who aren't going to move away. They're going to live here, they're going to die here. And this is rec, and, and other people, this is recognizing that. It doesn't account for those other issues that might bring more people here or, or have people move away. This is what it looks like in a different form. So it's, seniors are your grow, your biggest population growth area, and the needs that they have are going to impact your community, already are impacting your community. And these are the pro, the information again on that. Um, these are, you've got in your, all the sources for the, that in case people are curious about it. And we have a webpage where you can access our area plan and other publications. And our, um, if you have questions about the area plan, contact us at the Humboldt office.
Maggie, thank you very much. Any, uh, board members have any questions?
Yeah. Uh, Maggie, thank you for coming up to your presentation. And, um, I, well, I have to apologize, I had to step out for a second, but...
You've heard a lot of this before.
Uh, yeah. And I, and I really do have to, um, compliment you, and, and I appreciate your honesty. It took forever until you became the executive. Your, your predecessor never gave us the financial facts. Um, and when you run through the numbers, Del Norte receives about seventeen percent of the pot, but we're about fifteen percent of the population. So we do a little bit better than what our population represents. Um, I appreciate, uh, appreciate that, because that does help us answer questions as to, you know, why, why everything goes the way it does. And you've done a great job. I know they recruited, recruited you right out of the Peace Corps. So, uh, I know that's, that's impressive by itself to get recruited, recruited out of country. Um, one of the issues that is an ongoing concern, it's been a concern, I know, um, I talked to Herman Spetzler about it, um, Director Blacknick had been involved in it, um, as well, Sutter at one point was involved with it. And it's, it, we really have a significant, and you're not, your population statistics back it up, we have a significant problem with lack of adult day healthcare in the community. There is not for, those people that just need someone there, they are still somewhat independent. We really don't have, um, a facility, a place for that to happen. I know that's in Humboldt, but there really isn't an Alzheimer's or adult daycare facility up here. And it is a strong need in this community, having experienced it before. Um, and it would be one I hope that Area One still has on its agenda as, as, as potential future projects and, and, and problems that are going to pop up.
Yeah. Um, the challenge with adult day healthcare, and I ran the adult day healthcare programs in the Alzheimer's Resource Center in, in Humboldt before I went into the Peace Corps. And the state has, has done huge changes to that program. And I think they, in a nutshell, made it almost impossible for somebody to want to start a new one. They're, they're basically killing that program off. They're making, and it, it's a health program, they're making it so that you have to be nursing home level need before you can have this daycare program. It's a health model. And so to get that level of care here is a very high cost. You have to have therapists, you have to have doctors, you have to have, medically speaking, it's a very high-cost program to run, and nobody's going into that market. Um, the, a social model, on the other hand, which would be something that Second Wind was, that, you know, at the time, that, um, was more of a social model, people less, um, physically, medically needy, but, but, but needed some supervision. They wanted to be around other people, and it was a social model. You can't afford that, because you can't, Medi-Cal doesn't pay for it. There's no insurance company that pays for it. So people have to pay out of their pocket for it. And to get the, the staff there that you need. So what you need is a benevolent, um, group of people who want to staff this for free, who want to put extra money and lose money. It's not a...
Good luck with that.
These programs, these programs are not designed to make money. So that's, that's why you don't have them here in a nutshell. They just, nobody can afford to do it. Um, but, but we think training caregivers, I mean, giving more training to family caregivers and professional caregivers, so people can get some of that care and supervision in their home, um, is, is going to be as best you can get, unfortunately. And what, there's a study from AARP that family caregivers are doing as much as, family caregivers who work outside of the home are doing as much care as family members who work inside, who, who don't work outside the home. So they have their jobs, they come home and caregiver. And they're doing more and more medically, uh, difficult things. And part of what these family caregivers are, their stress levels, not just the care, but the worry. I'm, I'm doing things that are so complicated, am I doing it wrong? So, so get, making sure family caregivers and other caregivers get the training they need, so they're confident in their work. It's not going to take the stress away, but it will lower just that fear. Um, so in, in closing up, I did also give you the economic security information about what it costs in real dollars for a senior to, to survive here. And I don't, you can compare that to what the average senior lives on here, but there's probably a gap. Um, and you have a lot of people in homes, um, that they don't want to leave, and they need care. And I think one thing we should be looking at is cohousing opportunities, you know, um, maybe vetting people, younger people, training them to be caregivers, vetting them, you know, background check to see if they, you know, we can't have people live in different kinds of situations together. Um, and I do want to encourage you, in your next fiscal year, I know we're halfway through this one, but to encourage you to look at our, look at your budget and look at our budget, and see if you can't bring the funding level back up to what you were doing for, uh, twelve years ago, because it would really make a difference for our, for our viability.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes, Maggie. Again, excellent job of presentation. At our last meeting last week, uh, we discussed the status of our hospital and the impact on our seniors. And I hope that's an area of advocacy that the agency will become involved in. It's critical. I, I don't see, uh, airplanes and helicopters being the way to deliver primary care to those who are most vulnerable. So that's one area. And I think we have a vacancy on our A1 Advisory Board for Del Norte County.
We do, yes.
Uh, we, we, it's, and I want to say that there's some money in terms of remuneration, uh, reimbursement on gas.
Absolutely.
So, uh, those of you who are out there who want to get involved with, uh, something that's going to make a difference in those of our elderly, uh, please contact Maggie or myself, and we'll get you hooked up. Thank you.
Right. Thank you for saying that. We do have one vacancy, and we'd really like to get another Del Norte representative.
Thank you very much, Maggie. Appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
And with that, we're going to go to, uh, eleven fifteen timed item, clerk recorder, Elections Department, presentation from one of our fellow elected officials. Uh, no, blame it on him. After this.
Okay. Hello. Um, I'm Alisa Northrup. I'm the Del Norte County Clerk Recorder, Registrar Voters and Public Administrator. And as requested, I'm going to do a brief, uh, presentation explaining some of the duties of the County Clerk's Office. I will apologize in advance. I'm a little nervous, because my grandson is en route from Denver, coming here to celebrate his first birthday. So I'm a little anxious. So I'll start out with, uh, some introductions. As I said, I am Alisa Northrup, and I am the County Clerk. I've worked in the County Clerk's Office for eleven years. I was appointed in July of two thousand nine and was elected in June of two thousand ten. Courtney Howard, she has worked for the county for six years. We have two legal processing clerk positions. Um, one is filled by Susan Malu. She's worked in the Clerk's Office for eleven years. Um, but she's worked between the county and the state for thirty-three years. She worked for the courts also. One of those positions is currently vacant. Um, we are in the process of filling it. We have one Elections Clerk, and that is Teresa Gill. She has been in that position for almost a year. She did work in the Clerk's Office four years prior. And we have one part-time position, and that is filled by Bernadette McCune Sokolowski. And she does Clerk Recorder and Elections wherever we need her. So I'm going to start out with the County Clerk Recorder's Office. Um, even though the County Clerk Recorder's Office is often referenced as one office, it actually is two separate offices with different responsibilities. Um, the County Clerk Recorder's Office is the custodian of our community's life events. With integrity, respect, and an everlasting commitment to customer service, it is our mission to preserve and provide accurate records of birth, death, marriage, and real property records. And it's the objective of the County Clerk's Office. And it's the objective of the county clerk's office to be productive of the fiduciary responsibility as guardian of public records. To provide the public with prompt and orderly recordation, filing, or issuing of documents. And to provide quality copies of recorded documents and vital records when requested. We also file notary bonds and fictitious business name statements. All of these services offered are done in compliance with the laws of the state of California. So I'm going to touch on the duties of the county clerk. The county clerk is responsible for filing fictitious business name statements. Any person doing business in Delmar County under a name, a fictitious name, is required to file with the county clerk. In 2012, we filed one hundred and thirty-three fictitious business name statements. We file notary bonds. Any licensed notary residing in Delmar County is required to register and file their bond in the county where they reside. We also, although it's not done as often, process server bonds, legal document assistant bonds, unlawful detainer assistant bonds also. We issue and maintain marriage licenses obtained in the county. And 2013, there were two hundred and eighteen marriage license issued, and two hundred and three were filed in the clerk's office. And although it is the responsibility of the clerk to issue the license, the recorder is responsible for issuing certified copies of the license. And some of the recorder's duties involve recording documents compliant with DREM, which DREM stands for the Document Reference and Indexing Manual. In our office for recording, that's considered kind of your bible. If you get a document, you have no idea where it, what it is, that's where you go. In 2013, we recorded six thousand eighty documents. These documents are then scanned, imaged, indexed, and made available to the public. We file parcel, survey, and subdivision maps. These maps are reproduced and available in our office for public use. The originals are archived and are to be kept forever. We provide requested copies of documents to the public or other government agencies. Something new that we have, that we're doing is documents can now be searched online. This has resulted in fewer phone calls, people looking for a document, fewer customers actually coming into the office to search. And with the title companies, it's helped because they're able to search there at their office before they come over and see if there's anything they're looking for, and then do one final quick search when they're at the office, but it saves them time being out of their office as well. We also review and register birth and death records, and we provide certified copies of these records to the public as requested. In 2013, there were three hundred and forty-two birth records registered and two hundred and eighty-two death records registered. So it is also the responsibility of the county clerk to maintain original county records for future generations. The books we have in our office, some of them date back to the eighteen hundreds. So I am currently in the process of restoring damaged books in order to preserve them for generations to come. The process of restoration is generally one or two books at a time is sent out to a vendor I work with. Each page is individually put through, it's a deacidification process. They're being put into individual sleeves to help protect them from being touched so much, and they're also being rebound. The money collected, there are monies collected per government code every time someone records a document, and these monies go into an account to pay for this. And that's what that money's for, and it's all it can be used for is to restore and digitize documents. So we started this project in 2012, and currently to date, twenty-two books have been restored. So now I'm going to move on to the county elections office. This is the one probably most people know what we do, more of what we do. The Delmar County Elections Department is here to protect and promote public trust and confidence by providing a high level of professional, courteous, and efficient service to the public and to also ensure the highest possible degree of integrity for the county's election process through the administration of all federal, state, local, and special election laws in a uniform and consistent manner. So the Delmar County Elections Office is responsible for registering all voters in Delmar County. We maintain the voter files. We conduct federal, state, local, and special elections. And we are responsible for doing the verification on all initiative, referendum, and recall Currently, there are approximately twelve thousand registered voters and eighteen voting precincts established for the countywide elections. So the Registrar of Voter duties, so what I kind of wanted to touch on was what has happened in election recently and what is coming in future year. We had the presidential election in 2012. In the presidential election in June, we had a forty-four point four eight percent turnout. And in the general in November, we had a seventy point nine five percent turnout. The 2012 elections were special because they were the first elections implementing the top-two primary, also known as Prop fourteen, which was voted on in June of 2010 and passed. We also had a special election in January. It was held January eighth, 2013, and the special election was for the California State Senator position, fourth district. Out of the twelve thousand four hundred and twenty registered voters, three thousand one hundred and eighteen people voted in that election. It was a twenty-five point ten percent turnout. And of that three thousand one hundred and eighteen, two thousand four hundred and forty people voted by mail. On election day, only six hundred and seventy-eight people went to the polls. So what's coming is the primary election of 2014 is first. The primary election of 2014, what you're going to see on the ballot is all your local elected officials that are up. We do have one Superior Court Judge position and two Board of Supervisors positions, as well as all the elected state offices. It is scheduled for June third, June third, 2014, and this time we will finally be all completely second district. In the general of 2014, you're going to see the local and state runoffs from the primary and possibly state initiatives. We're verifying a lot of petitions now, people trying to qualify, or initiatives trying to qualify for November. I just wanted to talk a little bit about a couple of projects that are going on in elections. The, they're both statewide projects. VoteCal is this project that all the counties are involved in, and currently there are fifty-eight counties all using CalVoter, which is how we connect with the Secretary of State's office and share voter data. All fifty-eight counties are maintaining fifty-eight individual voting databases. Once VoteCal is implemented, there will be one central statewide voter database. And that will also make us HAVA compliant, which we're not by not having one central statewide database. Each county will still have their own election management system, and VoteCal is expected to become the system of record by June of 2016. And the good thing that I really like that the state is doing is they're really involving all of the counties in this, talking to big counties, small counties, medium-sized counties, and making sure that what they do, you know, they're working on this, that they're going to want it to work right and where it's going to work for everybody. So they're taking everybody's opinion into consideration. Also, online voter registration, this started in September of 2012. The intention and focus of online voter registration was to encourage more people to register to vote and participate in the election process. All the information collected is still, when we get these online voter registration cards, they're still being verified by election officials, and the voter must have a current California driver's license. And that is where their signature is captured from, from the DMV database. If someone tries to register online and does not have a California driver's license, it will let them continue, but it will at the end let them know, you need to print this out, sign it, and either deliver it by mail or hand to your local elections office. And I do go through these daily, and the ones that I see without signatures, I print out and mail to the individual, just as a safeguard. So now I'm going to move on to the one that probably everyone knows the least about, and it's Public Administrator. The Delmar County Public Administrator's Office is committed to treating every person with dignity, compassion, and understanding. I will always act in the best interest of the person I'm representing. I will execute sound fiscal management of the decedent's estate as I carry out my statutory role. Always remember, I am the voice of a person who cannot speak for themselves. So the Delmar County Public Administrator's Office reviews requests for decedent's estates for administration. Basically, that's the first thing, is that does this court person qualify as a public administrator's case? You determine jurisdiction of the public administrator to act in these cases, basically verifying that the decedent was a Delmar County resident. The law, the way the law is written is, it doesn't matter where you pass away, it's where you reside. That county is responsible if this person is to be represented by a public administrator. You're responsible for securing evidence of births, marriages, divorces, military service, and jobs, and this is to a certain location and disposition of estates. Basically looking for any possible relatives, as well as assets. I work very closely with private and public agencies and institutions, the county coroner, mortuaries, county clerk recorder's office, banks, and air seekers to administer the estate of deceased. And when I say air seekers, that's basically Jeanne Fay. He's been a huge help to me, helping me when the sheriff's office can't find anyone, you know, online, we can't find anyone, and he's found them every time, so he's found someone. The actual public administrator duties. Public Administration Department consists mainly of myself as a public administrator. I am the only county clerk in California who is a public administrator, and I have been contacted by other counties asking me how it works, you know, is it something that works well, or is it not go well with my other duties? Actually, it really works well with the clerk recorder aspect because you have a lot of records there that are available to you to help, but elections, not so much. Always seems right in the middle of an election, something happens, and it, so that's kind of conflicts sometimes, but otherwise, it meshes pretty well. I do have a deputy public administrator at the Delmar County Sheriff's Department, Mike Henderson. He initially just helps with establishing residents and initial next again. And if he can't find anyone, then he comes to me. As I said, a huge part of this job is working closely with governmental agencies and private entities to gather all the information possible to make decisions that need to be made. Social Security Sheriff's Department, DMV, local banks, Superior Court, hospitals, mortuaries, nursing homes. And I've established a solid mutually respected professional relationship with these private entities and government entities, and it is very beneficial. I mean, first off, if you can, the most important thing is you want to locate a family member if possible. And this is vital, if they can be found and inform them. And even if they're not willing to step forward, they can give you information as far as the wishes of the decedent. If you can't, if a family member cannot be located or just simply refuses to act, which is their legal right, it is the public administrator's responsibility to act on behalf of the decedent. It is really difficult sometimes to act on behalf of someone you don't know or have never met. You just have to, I just always have to remember that this was a human being who is now unable to act or speak for themselves. You can never take the attitude, this is just another PA case. And you can never lose that humanity side of the job. It does require a little extra effort sometimes, but in the end, I've found that it's always been worth it. So that is pretty much it.
Any questions from board members?
Lisa, first of all, thank you very much, excellent job. Can you just address a little bit about the ratio of the absentee voter versus the poll voter? I know you've expressed concerns in staffing polling locations in the past. Eighteen, are you getting enough poll workers?
Well, we're always have issue with poll workers, but that's just, I don't think there's any county that doesn't. We always seem to pull through. The county has always been very helpful in allowing county employees to be poll workers. And I also, it's supposed to run Saturday for the first time, I'm starting early with a poll worker program. And I'm going to put a couple ads in the paper, seeing if I get any interest of people that are interested that might not even realize that it's an option.
Generally, what is the ratio of the absentee vote versus the poll vote?
We are about, we're over half, we're about sixty percent vote by mail.
Sixty forty?
Yeah, so we're almost a sixty, not quite, but almost a sixty percent.
Is that trending, going higher?
Seems to be, yes.
Yeah, okay.
And that's one of the, you know, suspended mandates for the 2012-13 budget was, you don't have to send a vote by mail ballot out anymore unless the person qualifies certain ill, elderly, but no county clerk, no registrar is going to do that, you know? But the state says, suspend the mandate, you don't have to do it, but no one's going to do that.
The other question I have regarding the restoration of the damaged books, some of which are over a century old, is it your intention to use these books in the future, or are you converting them over to microfiche and they're just there for resource purpose? And someone has to get to this book to confirm it? Because it just sounds like they may get used and more maintenance will be, more restoration will be needed, and there comes a point of diminishing returns on some of these old books?
Well, like I said, that's, the money is collected, and that's what I'm required to keep these books in regardless if we do have them digitized, if we do have them on microfiche, the books have to be kept in good shape and are required, and that's why we're allowed to collect this money. If we're not, then we're not allowed to collect the money. And they're not handled much, but the very old one, and some of them, it's just years of being used, you know, there's been damage done.
Any other questions? With that, Lisa, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Lot goes into it. We're going to take a five-minute break for everybody except Supervisor Sullivan, since he did this agenda.
And see if we can get through this here pretty quickly. If we can, taking as much time as we need on some issues, the first thing I'm going to do is ask that we go ahead and take the budget transfers twenty through twenty-second.
So moved.
So moved and seconded. Public comment? Okay, so moved second to approve budget transfers twelve-two, twelve-three, and oh-one, oh-one, items twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two on the agenda. Poll the vote, please.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Chair Finnegan?
Yes.
It's eleven-thirty, so we're going to go ahead and item twenty-seven, conduct a public hearing regarding the CDPG final performance report. And so in order to conduct that public hearing, I'm just going to notify you that I am opening the public hearing at this time. And the first presenter is going to be Mr. Carnegie.
Thank you. Chair Finnegan. Today, this is the last of three required public hearings for every community development block grant that we have. This particular grant was awarded in 2010. It provided public service monies, total of $400,000. In that grant, we funded the Community Assistance Network, the Senior Center for Senior Nutrition Program, and the county library for a adult literacy program. The community development block grant program, their emphasis is providing services to low to moderate income individuals, and as a result, their measurement for what you've accomplished is how many non-duplicated services persons have been served. During this grant period, and I might mention that we're talking about different time periods because both the Senior Center, the Senior Nutrition Program, and the Adult Literacy Program were funded, received additional funding with the 2012 CDPG grant. The Community Assistance Network didn't, and their money had to be stretched out over a period of three years. But during the grant period, the Community Assistance Network served a total of five thousand, five thousand eight hundred sixty-eight persons. The Senior Center served, or this assisted in serving five hundred seventy-six persons, and the library serviced ninety-one persons. So with that, I'd open it up for questions or public comment. We do have a sign-in sheet for anybody who wishes to speak.
Any member of the public wishes to speak, just come up and identify yourself, since there's so many of us here, we probably don't need you to sign in. Any member of the public want to address us on the closing out of the CDPG? No? Then we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to the board. Do we have questions? Can I get a motion?
So moved.
So moved to, I'll close out the grant, I guess, right? All right, well, good job, Jim. Poll the vote, please.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Chair Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes, I would just like to thank you, Jim, for your uncanny ability to pull these CDPG grants together and that we're going to miss that work that you've done because it's monumental. When you start dealing with CDPG, it's like, it's like a moving target, whatever they do, and you've been able to work miracles. And the other point I would like to point out is that on the Senior Nutrition Program, those five seventy-six are a lot larger because there's a lot of people that are served every day, and those are just non-duplicated meals. Thank you. And thank you for your time in our county.
Yes, very much so. The rumor has that this might be one of your last grants that you've done. I'm sure we might find you somewhere, but really appreciate you've been a magician on some of these.
She walks out the door.
Yeah, thank you. All right, how about, it's eleven forty-five, Treasury Tax Collector, looks like we're going to be pushing that one off, huh? No show?
Yeah, Mr. Mr. Chair, having set the agenda prior, I would request that this stays on the agenda until we actually get a report back to us. This was a recommendation from the Treasury Oversight Committee back in 2012, and we have not gotten any.
Okay, so I would ask that it be set on the, we'll make notation and we'll put it on the next agenda and give proper notices on that. Regular items, let's discuss, take action, and adopt resolution, hopefully authorizing membership with the California Coastal Association Coast Walk, number twenty-nine. Supervisor McClure?
Yes, I brought this forward. Supervisor Greg Cox in Long Beach, who's also very active in CSAC, and Riley are pulling this together to try to get the associated cities and counties that are on the coast to work together to make sure that we have signage on our trails, to make sure that we move the whole coastal walk forward because it's such an economic driver of visitors. And so the request has been brought forward that we join this organization that's in its, I think, starting in second year.
I'll move to approve that.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
So moved and seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Number thirty, is discuss, take action, direct staff to research the costs associated with the installation of a gate on Union Street, as requested by Supervisor Gitlin.
Yes, Chair Finnegan, I did bring this up. As you recall, in December, a community effort was launched and removed about four and a half tons worth of assorted trash and debris from this area which is accessible to the public on Union Street. On the right of way, there's more to be done, but we certainly made a dent in it. So I think it's prudent for this board to consider the securing of this property to, number one, establish the boundary of the area of impact and identify the options to secure and prevent this area from being further assaulted with public access, vehicle access there.
Okay, well, I'm going to take the liberty of directing staff to look at the implication of what the cost would be, with the legality of blocking off, what the process is, and bring it back to us at a future meeting. Thank you. Number thirty-one, discuss, take action in relation to designation of the 2014 RCRC and CHF delegates and alternates. I have been, and I would like to continue to continue to be, a board member in RCRC as well as the income, excuse me, the housing, CHF. So...
I've been the alternate on that, so I would, I'll move that we continue with the two.
Same?
Second.
Moved the second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Carries unanimously. Number thirty-two is approve and authorize the chair to sign a letter in behalf of the Board of Supervisors for the Interagency Visitor Center Preliminary Environmental Analysis. And direct staff to send the letter to the Board of Harvard Commissioners. And that was brought forth by Heidi.
As many of you are aware, there was a, I believe, an agreement where the Board of Supervisors signed along with thirteen other agencies in order to support this interagency visitor-serving center. They have since prepared a preliminary environmental analysis. We have thirty percent construction drawing showing what it's going to look like. There is an identified site. There was a public or a meeting held workshop with different participants, and they encouraged those of us who had boards to return to request support letters. And I have drafted a letter, which is included in your agenda, that I think sort of points on some of the environmental issues which they did address in the preliminary, and then also, you know, just the benefits to our community for having this building like this.
So the letter support that you are requesting does not identify a cost to the county?
That is correct.
Good.
And is there?
To send the letter, supporting it?
Not at this time.
No, no, they have not identified any funding. I mean, the whole point is to have as many, as much support as possible, so when they go to seek funding from different, you know, wherever, that they know that the jurisdictions within the community are supportive of it. But no, it's not a commitment on the part of the county to...
Can I get a motion to authorize the chair to sign the letter? In a second?
Second.
Moved the seconded. Further discussion or questions?
I just want to say that when I reviewed the draft, the draft environmental report, I thought that they took a very short sight on alternatives, that they weren't really, they didn't really examine alternatives, which I think is unfortunate. I'm going to vote in favor of it, but I'm still very uneasy that we're going to build something possibly in a tsunami run-up zone that could actually be destroyed after we garner quite a bit of money to build it.
Well, and I also voted for send the letter, but I have concerns when you're using government money, albeit grant fund from the Wildlife Conservation Board or whatever, to build something that's in a tsunami zone.
Yeah, it's crazy.
I don't know, well, unless they want to spend millions to, like we did with the Harvard. But anyway, it's something that hopefully we'll...
Except it does, it does address the issue, is we need to get the visitor center on the highway. I mean, we lose a lot of people because you've got to find the cultural center if the signage is not good. And so it would be good to have some other partners in this process also, that's key, so...
No, it doesn't need to be hidden off Elk Valley Road someplace either. All right, did we already poll the vote on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Which brings us to item number thirty-three, discuss, take action, and direct staff to provide notification to the Department of Water Resources. Request to be designated as the monitoring entity for the Smith River Plain for the collection of groundwater.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Further questions? Public comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries unanimously. Number thirty-four is discuss, take action regarding interim appointment for the position of the district attorney.
The Board of Supervisors previously gave direction to pursue applicants for the interim appointment. That happened slightly before the holidays. There's been extreme difficulty in getting everybody in place to do the interviews, which have to be conducted in an open public meeting. And since that time and through the holidays, when we weren't able to set up those interviews, we've actually had one person formally declare for the position. And so at this point, obviously, going through the interviews, there, you know, there could be a perceived advantage or support by the board, depending on who was chosen. And so at this point, I brought it forward just to have that discussion. We're getting very close to the filing dates, and, you know, obviously you can take your papers out now, but the date is in March for the final, and then the electoral process would take over.
So it would really be only about thirty, forty days before the closing of the filing, probably close to thirty days before we could even schedule it for our next board meeting anyway, which...
Even if we could get it set for the next board meeting, yes.
Well, and then you've still got to coordinate that stuff, so I'll hear from other board members. I know where I'm leaning.
I'd be inclined to leave status quo with maybe the option of whoever, if there's a, if someone wins the election in June, that potential for the board to appoint early to that position.
I think that's a great idea.
Really good idea.
I concur. I would just say I'd like to not see this board get into a position of endorsement, endorsing a candidate just by the short timeframe, so leave it alone and let the election and let the people decide.
Supervisor Gitlin, I concur with you completely, and I like Supervisor Sullivan's notion that come June, that maybe the second meeting in June, that we let the people know that we'll be willing to appoint whoever gets elected if there's a clear majority.
We'll follow that direction, and we will immediately contact those that applied and apologize and get on to the June election.
Good. Was there anybody from out of the area that applied?
Originally, there was a resume submitted, but was withdrawn.
Okay, so it's all locals?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Then that'll be the direction that we take, which is none. Discuss and take action, supporting or advocating anything that's going on in Sacramento? Well, I hear they're back there again.
Mr. Chair, it's not on the agenda, but in terms of legislative, I would like to send a letter to the governor. Apparently, the governor's budget, the governor forgot to include our PIL funding, which is $600,000. That's extremely disappointing. We've been, we've been working on this for a while now, and for this county, $600,000 can go a long way. I'd like to send a letter urging the governor to include it in his budget since it's due, and Fish and Wildlife, Fish and Game, whatever they're called now, owes some payment in lieu of taxes for the land they do own in Delnart County.
Was it in his original budget?
No, it has not been budgeted since...
No, it has not been budgeted since two thousand.
Okay. I know they keep pointing fingers like saying, okay, well, we budgeted it, but the legislature didn't.
Appropriate it.
Yeah, that type of situation.
It's all planned words. The word inside the legislation, I believe, is allocate, so I'm not sure who is looking to whom to be responsible for placing that and actually having that transfer of money.
Okay, and I can tell you, at CSAC, we're having that discussion regarding repayment of some of the billions of dollars owed to county government. And I know he's scheduling, the governor's proposal is to schedule it for the next budget cycle, when some counties want to see, let's get your toe in the water now and look at some of that payback regarding some of the unfunded mandates, so.
I'm wondering if it would be helpful, rather than just sending a letter and saying, include all of that PILT money, you know, and it's kind of, then it just kind of gets round filed. But what would happen if we came up with a plan that said, we want to make a payment plan, we're proposing that you incur into your budget a payment plan that gives X percent this year, and puts it out for ten years, and they add what, you know, where we could kind of do a little smithing on it and give them some direction? Because maybe it would be considered. Do you know what I'm saying?
I do hear what you're saying, and it's a different school of thought. It's viable, but at the same time, you know, the only way we might get paid is a backdoor deal when they cut us a check and they don't tell the rest of the people that had PILT payments due that they weren't getting any, that Delmar was.
Well, and it's, on the state budget, it's small potatoes.
Exactly, exactly.
Oh, I get that. I'm just trying to give them.
Governor Brown could easily just add some little piece in there, and we get paid.
So you're just talking about Delmar County, Delmar County specifically?
Rather than save my proposal.
Okay, I was trying to make a proposal for Delmar County.
Well, that could be where they start.
Yeah. That's usually where we try to. Anything else before this board?
I'll ask you a long time.
Okay, before we adjourn, it was brought up that ask for a workshop regarding the state of Jefferson, and I would like to be in attendance for that and cannot be in attendance for the February fourth. So what I would like to do is get together with Toni, and she can get together with all of us regarding our calendar as to our availability, rather than going back and forth here for the next thirty-five minutes and not being able to agree.
That's good.
So let's, let's get a tentative date, and then after we have had that, then we will schedule it accordingly for a board meeting. So we're not going to commit to the eleventh for the board meeting. As far as the workshop goes, just to let everybody know, anytime a department head wants to put something on the agenda, or anytime there's a new policy or program that comes before this board, there has to be a fiscal analysis and the due diligence done, and this is going to be no exception. We're not going to load up rooms full of people that say, I want more representation, because we all do, and some of us, like myself, have been fighting like heck for it for the past sixteen years. What we're going to do is answer some of those questions about how, can you afford it? How do you, how do you pay for it? What's the cost? Things included, but not limited to the fiscal analysis, a sound fiscal analysis. So I'd ask staff to cooperate. I'm going to ask the people from the state of Jefferson, advocates, to also cooperate in developing some of that information, and just, it's easy to say, well, we'll take Pelican Bay and we'll pay those people. Well, it's not that easy. So let's get some real structure to the discussion, so we perhaps can be the first county that has a real intelligent discussion as to what we're doing and why and how we're going to pay for it.
There's also a discussion to turn California into six states. It's happening out of Silicon Valley, so it's going to get.
Yeah, I would note that in the discussion they had through Tahama County, they estimated about thirty thousand dollars to do the fiscal analysis or the minimum fiscal analysis at that point. There are a lot of issues that people have brought up, and we will, we'll try to address those as best we can. I think my request, just to dovetail on what, to at least be assured in Delmar County, one, that we can provide the basic services, which includes law enforcement, fire, those type of things. Just what is a skeleton system that, you know, with the user fees, I've already asked the county auditor to come up with some numbers in terms of property taxes, sales tax, VLF, other things that are actually generated here, but it might be good for those departments that are critical to continue a government to give us an idea of what, what would it cost to run a shoestring budget?
I mean, emotionally, everybody knows what the answer is, but as stewards of the government, as elected officials, it's our responsibility to make sure that it's a feasible form of government that we would be proposing and that we can afford it, and what the structure looks like, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I think it's going to be a great discussion, looking forward to it, and maybe we can borrow some of the answers from some of the communities that have also raised these questions. So with that, thank you for your help, Toni. Thank you all for allowing me to lead you next, this coming year, and we'll see you next time. Meeting adjourned.